Good evening, everybody. Thank you for coming tonight. I'd like to call the meeting to order. It's 7:04. Can I have an acceptance of the agenda?
So moved.
Second?
Second by Mr. O'Toole. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it is unanimous. Are there any walk-ins here this evening? Yes, ma'am. So just come up in the chair, speak into the mic, say your name and address. Keep it under five minutes.
Okay.
And be kind.
Be kind?
Yeah.
Okay. Alan Casper, One Turn Gilson Road. I'm here on behalf of my neighbors and myself regarding the wind turbine about 2,500 feet away from it. And when it first went off, I was very excited about it. Very environmental. And unfortunately, I don't think anyone had any idea about anyways that it's going to happen. Especially over these past few weeks, it's been unbearable. My partner is practically deaf, and he's been happily. We've gone to the Board of Health, we've gone to meetings, and many people, they don't realize that we've invited people to sleep at our house. You know, if they give us their phone number, we invite them over during the night and let them see how horrible it is.
Right.
The last email we got from the Board of Health, she invited the noise to, noise on the driftwood, you know, cars on the driftwood, you know. It's just weird, really. And I worked all this past weekend, had to get up early in the morning, get it to Boston, take care of patients. You know, it's not something you can be tired of doing. Every night, every hour, I mean, whoosh, whoosh, whoosh. You go out of your mind. And this morning was my day off. I was on all night, like every hour with that whoosh, whoosh. And there's nothing you can do. We tried calling people, we tried complaining about it, and nobody seems to care. They've done a study on it. Obviously, at the times and the conditions that don't bother us at all, because it supposedly isn't compliant with the noise regulations, but, you know, there were noise restrictions. And if someone complains about partying during the morning next door, you know, people come and they ask them to stop. We've been complaining and just asking them, please do something for us. And I haven't gotten a response. And I just have a few things on sleep deprivation here and the health problems, if anybody's interested in reading about them. I'm sure everyone's heard of them, but, you know, it's really getting worse.
We have heard that there were a number of emails recently, probably within the last week or so. You know, yeah, the emails have been in the last week.
Yeah, because you get tired. You know, you're like, why waste my time? You just don't.
Well, right. Well, I haven't, we really haven't heard much about it in, what would you say, a year, maybe? I mean, it's been quite, the complaints have been much less recently. You know, we obviously follow the guidelines for the testing. We got all the reports back, and they were in compliance with the DEP regulations and their guidelines, which is what we have to do. I know that the Health Department, when you call up and you say they're bad tonight, they're tracking when you're calling, what you're complaining about, to see if there's some way that there's some sort of pattern with the wind direction, the temperature, the whatever, because...
Yeah, they know what it is. They know what it is, and they know when to test. When that's not going on.
Well, I'm not talking about the testing. I mean, the testing is, you hire an independent person, they come in and do it, and they test all times, and blah, blah, blah. But in terms of the noise complaints now, I mean, we do have, we do have a little bit of control over the situation if we can, if we can get an idea over when it is bad.
It should just be turned off.
Yeah, it's, well, that's not gonna happen.
From 11 o'clock at night till 5:00 in the morning. That would be beautiful.
Right. Well, that's probably not gonna happen, but there are times where we can try and work with them to say, okay, if the wind is more than this, if it's coming from the south, if it's, if this is the temperature, I mean, the weather pattern, then maybe there would be times when we could have it shut down during certain hours of time.
But they know, they've known that for a while. We've been complaining for a long time, and we just gave up. It's not that we, it doesn't bother us, it's just like, what's the point? No one listens. Who cares?
Can I, so, yeah, Tony, I, we do care. Town employees care. They really do. All right? And just to, you know, I'm liaison to Board of Health, and I'm sitting here thinking, trying to remember, you know, what has happened and so forth. Things were fairly quiet, maybe three weeks ago.
And it was broken for a long time.
Well, it was, it was broken, they couldn't get paths, and, you know, I think it has a lot to do with how hot it is outside, number one, you have your windows open in the summertime, wind direction, tide. So these things were all, and if I misspeak, Tricia will jump in, these things were all looked at. DEP had to wait an awful long time to get the certain conditions correct before they could test. They would test at night, they would test, don't, don't nod your head. If I'm to speak, and Tricia will jump in.
I'm talking next.
That's, right. All right? So they've looked, I mean, these are the same people, the feds, the state, that told Falmouth to shut down their windmill at night because it was over the amount of decibels, if I'm not mistaken. Correct? Us didn't. Now, they were told when, where, to test, and it took a long time. But, and I'm not saying you don't have noise, I'm not, I don't live up there, so I don't know. But they do care. Jennifer down the town, you know, down the other end of town, they do care. There's just, you know, I think they're doing all they can do.
Well, I think people's hands are tied because of the situation, and the finances involved with it, and the legal or whatever involved with it. I'm sure everyone's hands are tied, and there's only so much they can do and say to really make a difference because of, you know, legal issues. But like I said, whether it's in compliance, you know, it's a person that they hired that worked for them originally, and it doesn't matter that it's in compliance, it's bothering us. If we call and say, someone's having a party, you don't come over there and go, oh, no, it's not, you know, it's not loud enough, you know? You can just keep going with that, that noisy party because, you know, it's not over the noise guidelines. I mean, you don't do that with something that's bothering someone enough to keep them awake. So this, it's almost the same situation, and it really, when it gets like this, it's terrible. It's terrible. You can't sleep. And it happens, it happens in the winter, too, with the windows closed. You can hear it through the closed windows. So we've invited people to come up and listen to it, and know what has happened.
I've been up there at 1:00 in the morning. I'm sure you guys have taken rides up there, too, to listen to it. People have been up there. The people doing the testing were definitely up there. So there's, we're out there. We hear what's going on. We hear the cars on the driftway, too. I live over by the train, I hear the train in the morning, you know? So I think, right, I think the only thing that we can do is try and figure out if there's a finite time when it is bad, when we know it's gonna be bad, and ask the operators to see if they can shut it off between midnight and 5:00 in the morning, when the wind is blowing more than 10 miles an hour from the, whatever, whatever parameters we can put around. I mean, I think that's probably the best-case scenario we could do.
Right. Any other thoughts?
The only thing I want to say is that, you know, we're looking to try to find the optimum conditions that are the worst, under the contracts that we have with the solar company. The problem is, is that we can't just uniformly, just go, unilaterally go out and say, shut it down. Because if we say that, and we don't have a basis for it, then it puts the town at liability for being sued for basically saying, guess what? We're gonna have a contract, you can have it going on, have a solar wind turbine, contract for 20 years, we're just gonna shut it down without a basis for it. Which is why we've done the testing, to try to find out. You mentioned the legal ramifications. This isn't like, you know, we're using their expert, and the experts cooking the books and coming back with bogus results. It's not what's happening. We're trying to find the right conditions so that we can find the time, the weather conditions, to say, shut it down. Now, that's the problem, because, I mean, if it turns out the conditions are perfect right this second, and you make the phone call, we make the phone call, and we try to get the company to come out, they're not gonna come out probably lickety-split, they're gonna say, we're gonna come out under these conditions for like a week or so, do the testing, and that's what they've done, the conditions aren't there. Sometimes we take a look at the weather patterns and say, well, maybe these are the optimum conditions, because weather's gonna change during the, long and short of it is, it's kind of like trying to find the right time, and then by the time it happens, like the past few weeks, you know, okay, now we, we'll try to get them out there, but whether or not we get the exact results that you've had for the past week, we may not. So that's the predicament, the town's, and just be able to say, shut it down. That doesn't necessarily negate the ability for people to say on their own, which is a cost factor, to hire your own, to put people out there for a span of weeks or something, that's a private right, which is why I'm saying if there's a nuisance based on that, we as a town are trying to do it based on trying to find the bad situation so that we can rectify it. Until we do, we can't legally act. If people on their own say, look, we're gonna go after a private right, then that's up to you to decide how to do it, and go that route. But we can't do that, you know, unless we have a basis for it. So, I mean, we've been trying to do that for the past year and a half, and the conditions haven't been right, or that's what we've been told. So I don't, you know, I know, believe me, I've been out there, I've been there at midnight, I've heard it, the dead of winter, you can hear it. Sounds like a jet airplane, I get it. I know, I can see what, what the nuisance is. Problem is, if the decibel levels aren't there, then what's the basis for us to say, shut it down? Because they're not, they're operating within the right decibel levels, and that's the predicament we're in. If we can get over it, we can say, that's the condition, you can't do it, you can't operate under those conditions. So that's why I say, from a legal perspective, that's why the board is trying to, you know, approach this, and we're not washing our hands and walking away from it, we're just trying to find the right conditions to do it. So I don't want, I'd like Sean and Tony.
Honestly, I've never heard any of this. I've not heard anything to this happen in all the time we've complained and gone to meetings.
That this has been going on? Well, that's something that...
No, that this is what you're trying to do. I've not heard any of this.
Well, we have been. That's what we've been doing.
Well, I know, but we've been, you know, emailing, and that's, we've gotten nothing back, saying that we're trying this, we're planning this. It's sort of just, you know...
Well, let me tell you, I'm putting it, putting it out there, I'm dismissing, you should be, I'm gonna disperse all that. The bottom line is, that's what we've been doing as a town. We heard it loud and clear, town meeting voted against shutting it, not shutting it down, but we heard that, because we're trying to address the issue, because we realize there are constituents out there, people in the Third Cliff area who hear, including you folks on Gilson, because we figured, there's a problem there. Let's see if we can figure it out. But don't think that we're not doing anything, and I certainly don't want you walking out of here and saying, oh, these guys are paying us lip service. Absolutely not.
Thank you. Any other walk-ins?
I need to take some, I did take so much effort to get into my gentleman. I wouldn't talk because I'm gonna cover some of the ground that my neighbor did, I'm trying to talk about other things.
Yeah, I'm gonna ask you.
My name is David Doherty.
One second, Mr. Doherty. Okay? So we're not gonna, we're not gonna rehash everything that we just talked about. Let me finish, okay? If you have new stuff to talk about, we wouldn't have it listening, but we're not gonna go down the same conversation that we just had, so...
Not any part of it?
Yeah, I mean, to some degree, but I'm not, we're not gonna...
We can't, because we violate open meeting. In other words, we'd have to notice this for a hearing, or, not a hearing, an agenda item, that's why you only get five minutes, because otherwise, we turn this into a half-hour discussion, and then people are gonna say, you violate... Mr. Doherty, let me just explain to you. Otherwise, we turn it into a violation of a meeting, and then people are gonna say, you violate open, open meeting because you're discussing something longer than five minutes, which you're not supposed to do. So appreciate where our position, because this is not on our agenda, we didn't notice it, your walk-in, just like the other lady, and that's why we're trying to accommodate you to the five minutes.
I'm trying not to talk, but first of all, Mr. Harris said that the tests were performed like DEP, they were not.
I didn't say they performed DEP.
He said, just like they did down in Falmouth. It was tech environmental.
Oh, they were tech, one thing.
No, the key issue about this is, the Board of Health might be confused about their responsibilities, because after they had those test results, the chairman of the board said, he's satisfied they fulfilled all the requirements of the permit. They're not the planning board, nor are they the ZBA, they're the Board of Health. And all we've asked them to do is to investigate the health issues, and they haven't done that. They've put it solely upon the testing, and they're not doing what the Board of Health should do, in my opinion, looking at the headaches, and bringing the gears, and all the other health effects that people complained about. We're asking them to investigate that, and them with that. The other thing about those tests is even the DEP, Marty Sueberg, in a letter, said that those tests that they have for sound, when they, when they, when they made up the regulation, they didn't even conceive of the unique noise that comes out of a wind turbine, more than just audible noise, the infrasound, the pulsations. So we're looking at tests that really aren't applicable, is what I'm saying, and this whole situation needs to be looked at outside the box. That's all I'm saying.
Okay? Thank you. Are there any other walk-ins? Yes, ma'am.
Just give me a bit of distraction.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Beth, we're at the twenty, little, little situation, Glazer Road, parking. So I just wanted to bring to your attention, not to discuss or anything, the two emails that I sent to you on July 20th, and then I shot one off this morning, which you may or may not have read, but we're coming to the meeting on the 22nd, and I'd like to have, I'm not sure of how you get a motion on, on your agenda, but have the motion be to rescind the 2013 motion to allow parking. In the email I wrote, I realized that Kevin was sort of being put on the spot, having to go back to FEMA, so I called, and they told me that there's no parking requirement, it's not really what they would consider, is put the road back to the way it was. But I explained his concern about future funding, his relationship with them, and he said that the man from FEMA said that Kevin should feel free, or you should feel free to go back to the local agent to discuss the requirement, if there is one at all, and, and if you need further assistance, he said that you should, the board should be going to FEMA, not, not to Kevin. This is something that, he really just said, parking is your, your issue, it's not FEMA's issue. So we've come, I think this has been going on since 2013, there've been, this would be, next, the next meeting would be the fifth time we've come to the town, between this meeting and trying to get rules, trying to get this put back. And I just don't want us to come to the meeting in two weeks and have to explain for the hundredth time why we don't think parking is needed there, and we'd like you to just put it back. So if Kevin or you need to talk to FEMA in the next two weeks, hopefully you have the time to do that. If you need another two weeks after that, we'd much rather have you put this item on the agenda out in another two weeks, if that's, if that's what's needed. We really don't, are not interested in explaining why some area that has had no parking for, at least, there are people there in their 80s who have no recollection of parking laws. And so it seemed to have gotten slammed in there for whatever reason, and so I just, so the question for me is, how do we get the motion on your agenda for, in two weeks' time, to rescind vote?
So you wanna be on our agenda to discuss this topic?
We are.
Should like the discussion and a vote.
I just want to rescind the vote. If you, if you...
Well, I can tell you, if you're not willing to discuss it, we're just not gonna rescind your vote.
Oh, no, no. Well, I know.
So we're gonna talk about it and do what we think's the best thing for the town.
Yes.
And I guarantee you, we don't make up things from FEMA, so I'm sure Kevin has an opinion, and, and we'll listen to that as well. So if you wanna get on our agenda, we...
Yep, no, we are on the agenda, and yes, we are certainly willing to discuss it, but to have to, if you want to listen to us explain why we don't think parking is necessary, versus you explaining why it is necessary, I just think it will be a better use of your time. That's...
Well, I guarantee you, we'll be prepped for the discussion, and we'll know why it can or can't be there, and we'll all discuss it, and we'll all give our own opinion, and...
Yep, and I hope that if you have the opportunity to talk to Mr. Ringley at FEMA between now and then, somebody can give a follow-up, and it's, it's in the email, and we have copies of the emails.
Great, if you can give Lorene a copy, that'd be great.
It's in the inbox.
Okay, great. And we'll see you on the 22nd.
Okay, thank you very much.
Tony, just one comment on that.
Yep.
The next couple of weeks, if we could take a ride down there, you know, either with Kevin or on our own, it would be pretty helpful, a couple of weekends before last week.
Great. Any other walk-ins? Seeing none, we will move on to the report of the town administrator.
I'll be brief. Just a couple of things. One is, we all attended the library groundbreaking on September 1st. It's about 60 folks out there, very nice, and construction has begun, and we're all very excited, the first of our three major projects. And Marty represented the board along with Mrs. Curran, and that was great. And there'll be the, the trailers there, and the operations man, and there'll be weekly construction meetings in addition to the other meetings that we've had to keep track of the problem, the issues and the construction. And as an ongoing item on your agenda, you've been seeing public facilities update for the last six, seven months, so that's where you'll get the progress reports on the library. So great day for that. Along these same lines, the public safety complex is out to bid. The bids went out two weeks ago. We are scheduled to open bids on September 30th. These bids have been designed so we can get the best price for concrete poured before winter. If we aren't able to order a contract, we might have to wait till after the winter. But I want to commend not only Jessie and her staff for the work they did with Dataless and Odin's Uello architect, but the chiefs and Lieutenant Thompson and Deputy Elliott have been meeting every single Tuesday since town meeting, working on the design of the public safety complex. The board's been involved in the decisions around that, and we're looking forward to a bid that lets us do everything we want to do there. And finally, I won't go into it, I, as usual, have an updated items pending, we're to three pages now, and happy to answer any individual questions about that, but this is just a snapshot in time every two weeks of operationally what's, what's going on, what's on fire, and what's back burner, and what's behind.
Does anyone have any questions or updates that they want Tricia to give on our list So can we follow up with the Health Department in terms of if they're getting in touch with the DEP in terms of the local...
Right, so just to reiterate, even though it's not formal on your agenda, the Board of Health logs all the complaints, and as you mentioned, Tony, is looking for a patent of wind direction, temperature, and conditions that show that the noise levels are particularly high. Even though the DEP found the wind turbine to be operating within the guidelines by a company that was approved by DEP, and under testing conditions, approved by the community group, a cross-section of residents from that area with times that the turbine should be tested. The turbine is operating within all the parameters. However, we've had, as Mrs. Glazer noted, an increase in complaints the last two weeks, which Jennifer Keith has logged, and she's working with Mr. Banger to see if there's a patent. The NOAA has a weather buoy, and we're trying to pull some data off that weather buoy. This came up at a coastal meeting we had last week to get some real-time data, and we'll look at that and see if there's a certain set of conditions that make it, make sense without doing a whole nother testing protocol or whatever. 12 to 5, I don't think, is realistic, but if the wind is in such, whatever, done to those conditions, we can be, have a protocol with, with the wind turbine.
I'm sure the, the turbine itself probably could give us the historical data for the last three weeks and what the condition was.
It can, but, you know, in any study or whatever, it's good to have different source points of, points of data.
The only other thing I wanted to bring up, was someone was asking me about public safety, excuse me, public safety building, and the bid that went out. This bid is similar to every bid for every project that we do in this town, and what happens is, it goes through stages. So they come to us, and we put a list together of what we want it to look like, and we see what you think it's gonna cost. And then you go a little further down the process, and you see what it's gonna cost again. And then you get really close to the end, and you see what it's gonna cost, and if the number shows up to be higher than what is voted at town meeting, then you have to start pulling some things away from the project and making them alternates? Is that what you mean? So, so what ends up happening in every project is, you've gotta make it hit the numbers. So you take something off and say, okay, let's bid it out, and see where the bids come in, and then you start adding all these things back in. So that's what happens on every project, that's what happened on the library, that's what happened on public safety, and that's probably what's gonna happen on the school. So you never know what the price of asphalt's gonna be, you never know what the price of shingles are gonna be, you never know what the price of concrete's gonna be. And you just hope you have an active market like we do, and there were a ton of bids, if I remember correctly, and then you get to get everything done in the end. So there were some questions about how that process works, and it's the normal process for every small or large project in town.
Right, and if I could just add, the town hasn't built a building since Jakins, which is 12, 15 years ago. So the process we followed is the one set by chapter 149. And the building's designed, and it comes at cost estimate, and between when you schematic design and when you're actually deciding where the outlets go, as Tony mentioned, the price of concrete, the square footage of the building is increased significantly on the fire side, so there needed to be an attendant reduction elsewhere. And we still want to do everything we would like to there, but that's gonna depend on the bids, and as you noted, we have to do al dordnets. But I would encourage residents to email us or contact the town for sources of information relative to how public building projects work, and we're happy to provide that information and the way that the law works and the process works.
It's all public information. There's no, nothing... So no other questions on Tricia's stuff?
No.
So let's move on to the next item, which is a recognition of a few lifeguard rescues. Jennifer, do you wanna come up?
Sure. I don't see any of them here.
Are any of the lifeguards here?
Those lifeguards. Yeah. I have too much homework. Oh. It's too bad.
Sean, wanna...
Well, I'll chime in after Jennifer, because I, you know, I wanna make sure that she knows the names of the guards that are involved.
So I know there were at least four incidents that happened this year, and every year there's unfortunately incidents, and this year, the beaches were more crowded than I can ever remember them being. And the lifeguards, in my opinion, did the best job I've ever seen. Attentive, you know, on the beach, spread out, paying attention, waving kids in when they get out too far, you know, really keeping kids in the area that they can guard, and really did a great job. And then unfortunately, they had a number of instances where they actually had to go and, and save or have a rescue attempt for people. So if you just wanted to summarize them, or just name the lifeguards that were there, unfortunately, they go back to college. I can do it.
You have them.
Yeah, I have them here. And, and just really thank these guys that really, for young kids, I mean, what is the age, from 16 to 20 something?
Exactly. The bigger saves that happened, that were in Hammersaw, which were, were pretty heroic, that they went in and risked their lives to save that 14-year-old boy. They were both first-year friends, which is really...
Right, well, before I read the names, is there anything you wanna add?
Just the same thing. I'm so proud of them, that they are young, 16 years old, takes a lot of responsibility. They go through a tremendous amount of training, just to apply to be a guard, obviously, you have to go through all that certification, and then on top of it, the town has added, you know, we take this program as a town very seriously, and, and we should be pretty proud of the lifeguard service that was offered here. And they can, they, I shouldn't call them kids, young adults, they do, they do a fantastic job. It's a lot of responsibility, there's not many jobs that people are sitting there watching you do your job while they're on, and, and, and I thought they did a fantastic job, so I, I do a big, I thought they were all pretty great. The rest of the lifeguards is off the beach, and we need them.
Sean, anything else?
Well, I just, yeah, I have to, I'm, you know, Tony, turn to me, 'cause I'm liaison to the Recreation Commission, and this is not the first time, you know, this has been brought to our attention. Definitely, you know, my selectmen's hat off to a side for a second, I'm a parent of a former lifeguard, so I know firsthand what, what it takes for these kids to be... a former lifeguard, so I know firsthand what it takes for these kids to be, you know, alert and on the ball for eight hours when it's a day like today, 95 degrees. These kids, I've said it before and I keep saying it, because you guys, you know, your children are coming up, and if they become lifeguards, it's the biggest responsibility at the youngest age. I mean, it's huge. Parents go to the beach, and they think sometimes they think it might be a daycare, and they don't have to watch their children. They might not be from the area, they might not have any idea what currents, and that's what two of these boys were involved in down in Hummerock. So, they might go to a pond or a lake in New Hampshire, and it's entirely different. So, you know, I'm just so proud of these, you know, individuals that took part in these saves, and I, you know, I said to Tricia earlier, that more than just, and it's unfortunate they're not here, they're at school, I'd like a letter to go into their files. You know, these kids may not even be going to college yet, so when they apply, I just think that says a lot about them. It's huge. I'm just proud to be a person of this town and a selectman. It's just people like this, it's wonderful. Thanks.
So, I'll just read off some of the names in no order, other than, you know, there were four major events that were tracked this year. So, there's Paul Finnegan, known as Sully, I guess, Carolyn Burns, and Bridget Vaza, or some of them, Steve Crowley, Ben Pretzer, Tom Hines, and Richie McAllister were involved in another incident. Again, Paul Finnegan again was in another situation with Griffin Vaza, Lulu Sweeney, and, is it Afy? Afy? Thank you, sorry, Afy McIntyre. And then lastly, the incident that Jen mentioned was where they actually performed a save on a 14-year-old boy, was Dave Craig and Griffin Vaza again. So, thank you for all you guys for your work that you did, and thank you for our town's safety. Thank you, Maureen.
Thank you.
Thank you, Maureen. All's checked. Okay. On our agenda, at 7:15, we have Representative Cantwell coming in, but he's got something he will be here in about eight, so we will go at 7:20 and talk about a public hearing or poll petition. Also, there's Kevin, I see Kevin here, there's Bill, National Grid. Didn't we discuss this one before?
Yes.
Is the person that lives near there here?
It directly affects me most of anybody in the area.
I live down the street a little bit, but I'm not named on the list also.
Okay, so, Bill, if you can give us an update on what you did since, usually you come to us, you want to move the polls somewhere, the residents don't want it where you put it, a lot of times, there's not a lot of options. We ask you to go back and talk to them, see if you can find a mutual place where it can go, where everybody's happy, and there's where we are right now, and what are you coming back with?
Okay, the location on Conservation Way. The canal fans will drive, we were able to relocate pole number one just to, if you're facing the street, just to the left, soon to driveway. I'm going to slack the wire into pole three, pole one. A lot of it's not happening, it's not going to make a corner, there are any holes, we're going to do a stub pole across the street, and then we'll put a guy wire on the backside of that pole, we'll potentially go back either way.
Any comments on that? I know some of them like the guy wires, is that, is that fine? Any questions?
It was originally going to go across to James Flecter's house, wasn't it?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, and so now it's going to go, is it the middle one that we're looking at? Is that the?
Yeah, pole number one.
Right.
If you look at Suits property line, it's going to go just to the left of that driveway driveway. Actually, it's kind of like right where that pole's going to go. It's not going to affect the next door neighbor, the fees. It's in a kind of like a wooded area there. I called them up, and actually didn't have a concern. Sue seems to be satisfied with the location, it's not going to affect the driveway.
No, it seems to be the most logical, I'm sorry, I don't know which.
Yes. Wait one second, I'll call you, and then you just give me your address. Any questions for National Grid? Tricia, you need to address first.
Suzanne Lou, and I own the property at 710 Perron Mansfield Drive. This directs, it affects me most of all of anybody, because I already have two poles located right on my property, if you look at it. Basically, I agree to this because it keeps the, it keeps in line with everything else, instead of sending wires across the street, across the street that way. If you could see the area, it really is not going to be that objectionable. The only thing was, they needed a variance from me, because now it goes a bit across my property, instead of staying on the town property, is my understanding. I do have two concerns. Like, number one concern is, I don't want to see the pole still sitting there a year later, that should have been removed. That's like the one concern. The second concern is that if any limbs or trees or any needs to be renewed, I would like to be consulted before they start chopping trees. Otherwise, I totally agree with this.
Can you answer her questions? Will you cut any limbs down and take the old pole away?
Yeah, we discussed that, that was a big concern that she had the day of, we discussed the location.
So, there's no problem with that?
I'll make sure that it's on the, you know, be able to, I think that's what has to be done.
Any questions?
Do you pull the pole out or just cut it off?
No, they pull it out. They'll transfer all wires to the, once that's done, like all the, so you've got to deal with the telephone company, cable TV.
Takes time.
Once they're off of the pole, and you try to push them, you get it that way, you're going to be sitting there for a while, and the pole is going to come out of the way.
All right. Tricia?
You have to vote to approve the poll on the, even though it's a standard form that National Grid gives you, you can put this woman's two contingencies right on your approval, and that way, it's memorialized. So, in 10 years, when none of us are here, and the limb's going to be trimmed, somebody's going to have a piece of paper that says, and hopefully, the pole will be gone before that, but the tree trimming will be perpetual.
Right.
Right.
I'll make it if I can find the motion, where is it? All right, I'll move to approve National Grid Plan Number 18776570 to relocate pole number one, six feet from the west, install pole, down guy, and anchor with five-foot lead. Pole will be located on town property on the south side of Conservation Way to be labeled number one, on condition that National Grid notify the abutting landowner of any trimming of trees, that it may infect her property or their property, and on condition that the pole, the existing pole is removed in timely fashion.
Second.
Second by Ms. Curran. Further discussion? See none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
If it passed around, some double pole cases that we requested last time we did.
Do you have to do the second one, Tricia?
Yeah, we have to do one more.
So, why, just describe that one real quick?
That's a pole, another tree guy at that town location. We've got a wire that goes off into property on Maple Street, and right now, the tree guy's sustaining the pole, so we want to put a guy wire, a stub pole and a guy wire on the opposite side of the street in order to maintain the straight setup, pole number 16.
So, you want to put in number 15?
So, it'll be 16 dash.
84.
Oh, on the other side of the street?
Yes.
Are those, any of those abutters here? Remember, is there any of them on Maple Street here? Did you talk to the abutters?
I had spoken to Linda Evers, and then I went and left it going on at David Mills house, and then I got any response back from them. And Linda had a concern, there's a double pole in front of her house, there was a bad accident at this kind of rough period at that location, and she just had a concern about making sure that double pole was removed.
You don't have to send a certified letter or anything like that, that this is happening tonight, we're talking about this, and we're going to vote this?
We sent a letter to all the authorities.
Okay, and we, so, so we can be sure that, you know, Jackie Illey and Johnny Russell know that this is happening?
The only one that's going.
Well, it's across the street, right?
Right.
Yeah. And that's a wooded area.
Right. I don't think. The houses are set back, aren't they? It's kind of in that triangle.
It's in that triangle area, yeah.
And that's the last house before the turn.
This is how, our quality keeps to that double pole where the ambulance had caught the back of it, it's just a double patient.
Any discussion on this? Do you want to, I guess the question is, do you want to pass it, or do we want to give the abutters a chance to come?
It probably looks like they'd be happy about it, I would think.
So, we have to notify them all in writing of the date and time.
We got a final meeting before the meeting, so.
Any discussions? If none, I'll take a motion.
Move to approve National Grid Plan Number 18776570 to install new pole, down guy and anchor with a six-foot lead across from pole 16, Maple Street. Pole and anchor will be located on town property on the west side of Maple Street, and the pole will be labeled number 16-84.
Second. Second by Mr. Harris. Further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all vote, it is unanimous. Thank you, guys.
Okay, there is a list of double poles that you had requested.
These are National Grid double poles.
Mr. Banger.
Mr. Banger's supposed to be getting another updated, that's our most recent updated list of the double poles in the area. Mr. Banger's going to work on getting his, just to get us a reason for it, and see if there's any more other lists that are listed.
Would the call be?
Well, we're going to be buying our streetlights, so we want to make sure we agree on the inventory, and we're not going to count double poles.
I got you.
Thank you for doing this, I'll make sure Mr. Banger gets it.
Just a question, we brought this up about, I think, probably June, July, the common, is it common way, Common Street? There's a temporary still sitting, and it would seem to be, there was a rush at the time, it's still, it's still sitting there, nobody's taken evidence. Instead, during the winter, it was a bad winter and all that, but it's still, we have some tempers, I mean, I'm by there a couple of weeks ago, and it's still sitting. I guess it was a fire at that location, and they put a temporary extension up on the road, the National Grid seven pole, and it's now, the electrician for the homeowner has to coordinate that with the National Grid to put a pipe service or something on service on that pole, and back to the house, because right now, it goes underground from the temporary extension, and they've got a conduit running over the ground by the front of the house, and I think the service is on, or you're on the left side of the house. So, it's just a coordination of a part of it.
For the material, I mean?
Well, as soon as the electrician that's going to work for the homeowner, you know, gets his permits taken into town, and he can do his work. Then we can follow through and, you know, cut one clear, and reorganize the permits.
I know, we actually heard contact, because I was following the owner, so it's just a question, the electrician, the new pole's there.
Right, I know, that's a point. Thank you.
Thank you both.
Thank you.
Kevin, are you, you're back later?
Yeah.
The next item is discussion, interview new annual appointments. So, we are still trying to figure out the Beach Committee for Commission, and Mr. Scott is here, he's, has to be appointed to a couple committees. Want to come on, Mike?
Yes, thank you. Good evening, Michael Scott, Common Street.
Can you get him on the TV, okay?
Yeah, yeah. She's going to make it look funny.
Turn around. Yes.
Okay, thank you, I think I applied for two committees, Beach Commission and Veterans Council, perhaps that's been renamed, but I was on the Veterans Advisory Council a couple years ago, and I don't know if that fell by the wayside, now it's been renamed, but I received a very nice letter from Don, an African service agent, in July, asking me if I'd be interested in reapplying to the new Veterans Committee or Commission, or we're calling it, and I'd be happy to serve on that, if the board were inclined to appoint me. Also, the newly established Beach Commission is something that I'm interested in, as a consumer of beach resources here in Situate, as most of us are, I very much appreciate being involved in that effort, to see where we could take things. You know, there's a Coastal Commission, and a Beach Commission, I'd be interested in getting on the Beach Commission, just to see what residents' feelings are about our beaches, about improvements that could be made, or how we might be able to further utilize that resource in the town.
Martin, you want?
Would you want to be on both committees, Mike?
I would. My memory is that both committees generally meet a lot once a month, so it's not an extreme plan commitment, it's an area willing to volunteer, and veterans are important, personal interests to me, and beaches are a part of it, so.
So, Martin, you know the veterans stuff the best, would that come in openings?
Well, we'd be, our minimum is five, and as far as applications go right now, I think with Mike's, I think we're at about five or six. So, like I said, the minimum's five, but we're going to go between five and seven.
Have we approved the charge?
No, I think we've, we're still to finish.
It was down right away, but it has not been.
So, what we anticipate is that the next agenda, you'll finalize the charge, but also have folks in for interviews, so we can get going right away, and Mr. Scott can kill two birds with one stone tonight, if that's the board's pleasure.
Mike, are you, are you a veteran? I am not, so I remember from our last bylaws, there was a mix of veterans and non-veterans, I think, who may have had six military members and three non-norians, I would be non-norian.
Okay.
Right. Any questions on the Beach Commission? So, if I, again, we wanted for Beach, we wanted to have seven, is that right? Five and seven?
Five to seven, so.
Five.
So, there are four, does Mike make the fourth now?
Yes.
The fourth, but I anticipate the Conservation Commission, Mr. Schmidt talked to me about it, so that would be your fifth. I'll double-check, I meant to talk with Pat before tonight, but Bill had mentioned it to me a couple of weeks ago.
Okay, so we have not done anything on this, we keep postponing it until we end our people. So, do we want to appoint all four of these for the Beach Commission, and then, why don't we wait on the veterans until we get all the rest of the people in, and just put Mike's name on the list to get them to support us?
Yeah, I think it's great.
Makes sense to me.
So, can we have a motion for the Beach?
I move Michael G. Scott as a new member to the Situate Beach Commission. What, how do we put it? Do we have like a?
Terms.
The terms, I think the terms are like, there's a two and three, right? For three years, or until?
A successor is named.
Successor is named, there you go.
Second by Ms. Curran. Further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, none finishing the acts.
I nominate Stephen Tripp on this, as a new Situate Beach Commission member, for a term of three years, until a successor is named.
Second. Second by Mr. Harris, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it's unanimous.
All of them are going to be three years?
No, two of these guys.
Two, right? I'll nominate Carol Walsh as a new Situate Beach Commission member for a term of two years, or until a successor is named.
Second.
Second by Mr. O'Toole, all in favor?
Aye.
Finally, I'll nominate Nancy Fay as a new Situate Beach Commission member, for
a term of two years, or until a successor is named.
Second.
Second by Mr. O'Toole. Further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great, so there's four on that committee now. We'll get the charge and the nominees for the veterans done in the next meeting or so, and Mike, your name will be on that list.
Yeah, it's, it just needs to be one of us.
It's a great, it's a great commission. I mean, the potential's, it's there, you've got the beach stickers, you've got beaches, the different types of improvements, you can think about different things. Mike, good luck.
There's five in the beaches that you're in, it's good.
So, now you have to... So, now you have to figure out how to get people who don't have a boat like me to get out there. There you go.
So, I'll get correspondence from the board on both of those commissions.
You'll get, on the vote, if you get elected, you're on the commission from, so here's your application, you're on the Beach Commission. And if you get on the veteran one, then we'll let you. You don't have to come back.
We have a majority.
Yeah, we've got to wait and see if it takes veterans priority.
For the beach.
Oh, he's on the beach?
No, they can start meeting. They can start meeting, couldn't they?
One that, once they get sworn in? What was, how many? One more for the, um.
Five minimum.
All right. Great, so.
And Julie Kelly wants to be in the Beach Commission, too. So, you have six. You need the ConCon liaison, but Julie, I just remembered that, it came.
Can we do it right?
Did she change her mind? No, you have, alright, we'll, we'll close the loop on that next meeting.
Kevin, uh, next item is Rhodes Salt Contract.
Okay, where am I? Mineral contract.
We really have to talk about this.
I hate to bring it up when it's 94 degrees out, but we have any homework and we've signed up for receiving salt this year and stop filling the shed now. We've gone out, we looked into different options, with some different sodiums, as far away as Medway, as far, you know, also Plymouth. We wound up going with the state bid list, and this is actually the state bid number from North Block County, so we're able to get in on that because we go in on North Block County. It's $2 cheaper than the Plymouth County.
Oh, good.
So, we came up with a price of the $68.36 per ton.
Delivered?
Delivered.
Do we have any left from last season? Did we go through it all?
Two buckets.
Just curious. Had to ask.
We have a little in there, not much, but that was. And this is the same rate that the state had last year. We signed an interim contract to continue filling, and this was the rate that we had last year.
Oh, that's good.
Mid-year last year, we filled up last year in the summer, and we were able to get a real good rate. But if you remember, that was a nice easy let to the year before.
How much is a ton of salt?
Is that a thousand pounds?
Yeah. But is it a pickup truck full, or is it a dump? How many tons going like a dump truck?
What's a cubic yard? Is, is, a cubic yard of salt?
It's 27 cubits.
Feet behind us. But what's a cubic yard weigh? That, you know, that, a pickup truck or one ton was about a cubic yard, three by three by three. But that, that's around a ton, isn't it?
You have a one-ton truck, if you've got a one-ton, say, 350, it carries one ton of salt. Your average truck is probably around, you know, they're taking out when the trucks go, ten wheelers, somewhere around 11 to 13 tons of salt they go off to.
Right. What are we, what are we going to get? 200 tons, is that what you said? What do we sign on?
I don't think it's 200 tons.
Or we just, so, we're not committed to a certain amount?
No, it's just whatever we need.
Just a per ton. That's good.
If we, if we fill the salt shed now and we don't need any, that would be great. And hopefully we have plenty for next year also.
Out of Chelsea? Can they bounce us around if it gets tight? Doesn't matter.
We're setting up the same deal we did last year. We have to get our own trucks to help out, we'll do that.
Good.
And it's, what they did is, I think they knocked $10 off when we did our own trucking. Because MacArthur's was so busy, they couldn't get trucking to deliver.
Blue Water Contract for the purchase of Roadway Salt to Eastern Minerals Incorporated of 134 Middle Street, Suite 210, Lowell, Mass. For the period of September 1st, 2015, through July 31st, 2016, for $68.36 per ton.
Second.
Second by Ms. Curran. Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, it's unanimous. Thank you, Kevin.
Can I do it again? I hate to bring it up on a 94-degree day coming in about salt.
Kevin, I wanted you, oh, you guys are up here. Okay. So, we're going to talk about seawall easements now.
I thought this was interesting, the way it was written.
Sean, are you?
Great. As you know, we're pushing forward with two seawall repairs in the very near future. 700, over 700 feet on Ocean Side Drive and 158 feet on Edward Foster Road. The initial steps in this were to obtain the easements, both beachside and 10 feet land side, as well as the land under the wall. We obtained the 12 easements for the Ocean Side Drive project and the three easements necessary for the repair on Edward Foster Road. When we went to report the easements at the registry, they requested a certificate of vote, Board of Select, that they accepted the easements as a gift from those residents.
Motion?
Please.
I'll move the Board of Select to vote to accept grants of easements as a gift, and for consideration of less than $100 for the attached properties located on Ocean Side Drive. Two separate votes?
Correct.
Most of the four Ocean Side Drive easements.
Second.
Second by Ms. Curran. Further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it's unanimous.
It's great to have that done.
And the one on Edward Foster.
Move the Board of Select to vote to accept grants of easements as a gift, for consideration of less than $100 for the attached properties located on Edward Foster Road.
Second.
Second by Mr. O'Toole. Further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it's unanimous.
So, Tony, if I could, we just approved 17 easements that you did in three minutes, but took them upwards of two years, 12. And I just really want to publicly thank both Sean and Kevin for their work in this regard. I mean, it wasn't easy, and I think they could draw a picture with their eyes closed of every single house on the coast. And these are important projects and involved a lot of conversations and mediation and negotiation. And I just want to commend both of you for doing that.
Yeah, I wanted.
Well said.
Thank you all very, very much for that. And also, thank you to all the residents that gave these easements to the town.
Yeah.
You know, it's a requirement to get this done, and I'm glad to see the value in it. And we're looking forward to, you know, we've put a ton of time and energy in just to getting the plan of the seawall done, raising the money to build the seawall, and then getting these easements done. So, great job all around.
This is a win-win. It's a win-win for owners, for the town. And I'll tell you, it just shows you how in partnership going forward, if more land, property owners, as well as the town, are able to do this with other walls. It's a great thing for the town.
Great. Thank you, guys. The next item, and we are back on track, Memorial Beach Donation, Bench Donation, excuse me, Kevin. Just for those that may not know, probably about five or six years ago, we started this program where you could, if you wanted to donate a bench in town, that we would facilitate it and put it in and put a foot in it and get it all engraved and everything. And it's cost about $2,600 now. And a number of people have taken advantage of this. I myself did also. And they're all over the place, and they're good sturdy, quality benches that are up along the beaches, on Widow's Rock, and I just see, Dick Blake has a beautiful one. And I think we have a list of them tonight to approve, so.
Yes, we have a list of seven that were done this year. And I can, I can read the names if you'd like on all occasions.
Sure.
First one is at the Lighthouse, Valero. Next one is at Minutet Beach, and that's Barkawitz, Quealy. I hope I'm not murdering names. Minutet Beach, Roach, Museum Beach, McCarthy, Widow's Rock, Kent, Widow's Rock, Swinder, and Museum Beach, Fitzgibbons.
I think it's Swider, but.
Swider, okay.
Great. Yes, Sean, before we move on, the procedure for this, if you could just tell me real quick, I think I know it from the people listening, and that's the reason I'm asking.
It, it goes through Lorraine's office, it's an application for a bench. We send it off to a random company who are purchasing the bench, and they come up with a proof, proof comes back. It gets sent to the people who are purchasing the bench. Then it gets made, they deliver the bench. In the meantime, we pour concrete pad where, where the bench goes and get that all set up. It's not-for-profit, it's basically, if anything, we're lucky to break even in most circumstances. But we, we, you know, we take care of it. Lorraine does a great job handling that and setting it all up.
The reason I ask is I knew the procedure, but I just wanted to hear you say it. I was involved with one of these benches. The family called me because they didn't realize the process. And they had, you know, a golf tournament scheduled. Lorraine and whomever else, thank you very, very much. The family thought it was because of me, and all's I did was put them in touch with you. So, it got done in time for the tournament. And like Kevin said, and we've all seen them, they're all granite, you know, the same. But I just wanted to publicly thank you, because, you know, that was. And that's why I wanted to, you know, if there's anyone else that I skip, it meant an awful lot to this family. And I get all the thanks next to you.
Are these all in?
Rush, what we will usually try to do is, we schedule the benches, and our minimum concrete loads are three yards at a time, so we try to line up three, three benches at a time to do it. You know, it's, it's not, you know, we don't like sending concrete.
Correct.
The way it's going to operate. And so, if there is some sort of time delay, sometimes that does occur, as we look to match a couple up and charge a company.
Are these all in place now, or?
These are all in place right now.
Oh, great, okay.
Sorry.
I see the installation date now.
Who's doing the next one? The quit clean deed, is that you also?
I can actually handle that.
Do we need a motion to accept the?
Yeah, we do.
Yeah, and I think, um, this is Lorraine's first time through the whole thing, is then you send a letter to the people, because for tax purposes, they need that as well.
So, I'll move to accept seven donated memorial benches from the Valero, Bartkowskowitz, Barkawitz, Quealy, Roach, McCarthy, Kent, Swider, and Fitzgibbons, uh, Fitzgibbons, friends and families, in the amount of $2,650 each, for total value donation of $18,550.
Second by? Second. Can you, Mr. Harris? Further discussion? Any discussion?
No, no for the discussion.
Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it's unanimous. And Kevin, Sean, I want to thank you both for two things. You went in on painting on Country Way there to get those lines down. And Sean, you put them down almost with hours after we spoke, which was great. I mean, even the temporary ones and the big ones, because that was a little dangerous curve there. And I don't know if anybody, on Pin Oak, there's been like these pallets of stuff in the middle of that roadway. Where if you go into Pin Oak, there's a, it's like a V. I don't know if those were picked up. I thought I asked somebody. Maybe one of you can note that, this ended the week. It looks like material from the people that were doing it that they.
Could I just ask, Mr. Tripp? Is there any consideration of changing the lighting at the top of Jericho Road? Vehicles are like stuck on Jericho Road at Beaver Dam forever.
Oh, the timing?
Coming up, the timing of it, it's just, it's saved forever. Oh, it changed, but the, the timing changed.
Can you adjust them?
Yes, to some effect, they're, they're not that adjustable. We don't, I don't think we have. We'll look at it. We'll look at it. I don't know if we still have the, but we'll definitely, we've been looking at that.
Anything else for these folks? Thank you, guys, very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
And I noticed during that item that Representative Campbell came in. Right on time as usual, Jim. We're going to go back to the item, the second item.
Kevin.
Kevin, would you want to stay with Jim for this, or?
Your work. Excellent.
Jim, thanks for coming.
Thanks for having me.
You're here for the Coastal Resiliency Grant.
I'm here to follow up, and one is to thank the board, just for your foresight in hiring Nancy Durfee. Because just as you were saying before, Sean, about how we make calls, we try to support things, and sometimes people, well, it's very good that people see that and join the effort, but there are others who are just working day and night, doing so much. Nancy Durfee and Kevin Campbell are here with Tricia Casey, really put our town at the forefront, very nationally, when it comes to coastal resiliency. I'm here tonight, I do not know if this has come out yet, but the press has passed really timely. But I'm here tonight to talk about a grant, the town of Situate is only one of eight in this state to get a grant for coastal resiliency, it's $180,000. It follows the fact, by the way, just nine months ago, 10 months ago, by the town, the highest award ever that we have, it's our seawalls, for the new seawall fund that both boards, Marshall and Situate, working together, each town, about $4 million on seawall. So, one, I want to be here and want to say thank you, because really your foresight, I have a coastal resilience officer who's going to help the town continue to hopefully have this 10% off for every single person who needs funding shares. But the other aspect is just what this proved tonight, I have that history with the government and our board, kind of check that the funds are coming. But it's, it's just the fact that because of her work and Kevin's work here, the town has had a grant of $180,000. This grant is helping coastal resiliency. The purpose, this is more for soft projects. This will be to assess coastal erosion, set in transport, and prioritize our shore protection strategies. One of the things that we got noted for Situate is the collaboration that the town has had with some of our coastal leaders as well. And I always want to point out, I was at a, in one week, I think Tricia was there for three of the meetings in a row that Nancy put together, we were national leaders for the EBA, we were people from the CDM, federal leaders, state leaders, local leaders. I saw the chief when I came walking in, the fire chief, everyone talking about how we're going to be handling seawall rise, how we'll handle all recent ferocious storms, how we'll all work together to prioritize our work. And I tell you, it's, it is bear and fruit, because all these agencies look to Situate and say that we have our act together. And I'm really proud to be tonight to share with Karen, Nancy was on vacation, and to make sure that the board knew of Nancy's work, Kevin's hard work, Tricia's hard work, to get the $180,000 grant. And the hope is, the Lieutenant Governor, who's at Karen Belida, talking about current connection here to town, and how she wants to be able to come forward in the future to, to be able to take on other coastal adaptation strategies and hopefully further grant. So, come in here with us.
Thank you, Jim, very much. And, um, and you guys remember, probably Rick Murray started this back many, many years ago, probably seven, eight years ago, when he said, had the foresight to kind of say, we've got to get working on this stuff. And then, you know, Tricia had the foresight to hire a coastal resource officer, and Nancy, she's got a great job. I remember at the picnic, we were talking about all the things that she's accomplished in the short term that she's been there, it's pretty.
She's already made her salary four times over, and she spent 40 hours on this grant alone, so.
And it's a team, you know, do you?
Yep. Yep.
Government involved in it, conservation involved in it, and it's really a whole team effort to get this done.
And I want to know, because I was at a recent meeting about Situate Coastal Advisory, just of all the different coastal groups that are involved there, and people appreciate the fact, they're always, of course, there are other projects, people always want to see funded, but they know. And for all the things they've been asking for this board, it's been time and time again coming forward, and I made that case by saying, you know, that it's good that we have folks, David, if it wasn't for David coming forward and telling us about bigger waters, you know, doing that presentation, he really was a huge help. But I stood up and said, you know, we are so proud of the fact, our town would not get these kinds of funds if it wasn't for the board, for the cooperative law and citizen groups. And it does say a lot for our town as a whole. And I'm proud to be able to know that only a few communities get these funds. We are at the forefront, and I hope it's there until we are more people.
All right, anything?
Yeah, well said.
Thank you very much. Trish, anything to add?
No, thanks.
Jim, thanks for coming.
Thanks for stopping by.
And we'll leave this, we'll leave this with Trish, she'll be here. That'd be great.
And Jim does a lot, he does more work than magical. Every time we have an issue, I call Jim immediately, and he jumps on it before we can even do it. I think he's a huge help.
Yeah, thanks for bringing that up, Kevin. You know, you're a great representative of this town, and you know our issues, and you fight hard to get us what we can, and we really appreciate it. And you want to make it easier for the team that we have, so thank you so much.
Thanks.
Great, we'll move on to the quick claim deed on 163 Stockbridge Road.
Did you, I have Jim's note, John, or if you want to set it up, that's fine.
Yeah, I'll set it up. I'll, just so everybody understands, this is regarding the Affordable Housing Trust. And back in, I forgot the exact time, I guess it must have been, was it 2010? It's 2010 we had a special town, or an annual town meeting, and we transferred the property on Stockbridge Road, 163 Stockbridge, to the Affordable Housing Trust through the town meeting. But the actual quick claim deed, in order deeding the property over to the Affordable Housing Trust, was never actually signed or recorded. In the meantime, the Affordable Housing Trust has entered into an agreement. Attorney Sullivan's here on behalf of Mr. Salamondo, who actually has built an affordable housing unit, and I might add, a really good-looking one, that's modular, but it looks phenomenal, on the property. And so in order to be able to sell it for the Affordable Housing Trust, this deed needs to be signed to the trust. The trust will then take it and sell it. And in the meantime, Mr. Salamondo will be reimbursed at the prevailing cost of whatever it sells for. This is pursuant to a project that he had built down in Hummerock, and consequently, an affordable unit was to be built there, but instead, it was offered to be built on Stockbridge Road. And if anybody sees it and drives by it, you'll see it. It's a white cape, about three bedrooms, well-done, two-car garage. It sets back, it's actually front sun or backs up to the second hole of the golf course. So in order for this to move forward, we actually need the Board of Selectmen to sign off on the transfer of the property to the Affordable Housing Trust. From there, the Affordable Housing Trust will put it up for sale, and then sell it to somebody who qualifies as an affordable unit here in the town of Situate, preference given to a Situate resident.
Right, thank you for... Just, just one question, and for John and Walter, is it just the one house? I thought originally there were going to be two lots.
There's actually two lots. This is just one of the lots to the left. The other lot has actually a potential for two, two units being, like a condex or a joint building right there. So there's still another lot, duplex that can be built there. And the other thing is, the trust is looking to have an easement going over that side in the future, in the event that anybody on Stockbridge would want access during the winter to the golf course, they wouldn't have to drive all the way to town. If we can get a sidewalk completed down to that length, it would be accessible for the people and the residents in that location. So still, there'll be more units to be able to build there, potentially.
Do you guys have anything to add? Just your name and address if you want to speak.
Michael Salamondo, I know, designed Situate. I live in Hummerock, in very, very central, like, units.
And you built that?
Yeah, yes, I built the, I built the units.
Great.
And my name is Walter Sullivan, and I'm aware of the work with Salamondo. And I'm also one of your associates there, and down to the wire. The next step is to get something before the...
We'll get it before the Affordable Housing Trust, and I think I also will join as a member to go to the zoning board, so that everything sanctioned through and blessed by the zoning board, just to clear off all those other items. Just as an aside, I just want to say, I've had the esteemed privilege to work, when I was on the zoning board, as chairman and as a member, to have Attorney Sullivan come before, and I have to tell you in all honesty, you were a pleasure. You're one of the attorneys I actually admired, and actually kind of tried to rule, model myself after, and I have to say that you've made the process a much better process, Walter. And I'm just saying that because, haven't had an opportunity to say that to you, but I have to say, it was always a pleasure having you come before. You were very prepared, but also you were very fair in your approach, talking about both sides of the issue, so at least people on the zoning board had the ability to take a look at both sides, whether they agreed with you or not. But that's a, an aspect and a quality that a lot of attorneys don't have, and I have to say, I appreciated it, so.
Thank you, Mr. Lee. Do you want to take a motion?
I'll move to approve the quick claim deed to transfer those certain parcels of land situated in Situate, in the county of Plymouth and Commonwealth of Massachusetts, being shown as Lot 1 and Lot 2 on a plan entitled, quote, "Plan of Land in the Town of Situate, Massachusetts, Stockbridge Road, dated March 12, 2010, prepared by Ross Engineering Company, Inc., end quote, to the Town of Situate Affordable Housing Trust pursuant to the authority granted under Article 22 of the Town of Situate Annual Town Meeting, held on April 12, 2010."
Second.
Second, Mr. Curran, further discussion? Seeing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it is unanimous. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Long overdue.
You can pick that up, when will we have that, tonight? Lorraine?
I have to go. I have to have it certified by the town board, so tomorrow I'll have it ready for us to sell.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Need to advise Jim Toomey as well, since it came from him, so just make sure he lets it be received.
Great, the next discussion vote is for turnout gear for the fire contract. This is our treasurer and financial director, and our fire chief. Good evening. Mr. Murphy?
What we have for you tonight is a contract for the $66,000 capital product that was approved in the April town meeting. This is one of two things, second phase, for approximately $60,000. It's on the, we're part of the fiscal '17 capital plan, as part of our five-year plan currently. This will buy approximately 27 full outfits for our fire personnel. And these pieces of turnout gear have to be custom measured to each person. So that's what we have for you tonight. Northeast Rescue is on the state business, so that's why we're going to be sure of it.
Great. Chief, do you want to give a, what is turnout gear exactly?
It's a bonus gear we use for our fires. Anytime we have NFBA 25, National Fire Protection Association, strong arguments, you don't have to get any more than 10 years to keep it safe for the firefighters. So we're at that 10-year mark now. We're going to try to do half the firefighters this year, and half the firefighters on Christmas '17.
And that's just the heavy...
It's all the fire gear that we've got to go into a fire with, so whether the car accidents, fires, whatever, that turnout gear is what's safe for these guys in that situation.
How quick can we get it? Are we pulling up on anyone at risk now, John, are we?
No, it's 10 years now. We have picked some pieces of gear here and there that have torn, whatever it was, burned, whatever, so we've replaced some small parts through the years. But right now, everybody has been measured, and once this is approved, we're going to move forward.
Good.
Trish.
No, motion be granted?
We're selecting a water contract to Northeast Rescue Systems for turnout gear for fire personnel, the total amount of $66,000.
Second. Second, Mr. Danny, further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it is unanimous. Lorraine, thank you. And Chief Murphy, while we have you here, we didn't have you at our last meeting where we had a recognition for years of service for different employees, and we have a little symbol of our appreciation for the 20 years of service that you gave, have given us so far in the town. Thank you very much.
Got to share them.
Six in there.
There may be one less.
Gloves for the turn-up.
Great, moving right along to the next discussion and a vote on the liquor license process. Trish, I want to know that you...
Doesn't matter. Lorraine, do we get the license from Ms. Martini?
No, we haven't received it yet.
Okay, so this is informational. There's two documents in your packet. The first is from Town Council Jim Toomey on statutory obligations when a license becomes available to the town. And the second one, I asked Lorraine to prepare, and she did a great job about how that affects us. In brief, when a liquor license is turned over to the town, and we were informed that we would have in our possession yesterday, the board can determine the manner in which it will accept applications and review them. Traditionally, it's my understanding that you have no standing policy on this, and that it's been first come, first served. I did query a number of my other colleagues and other municipalities, and I would say, on balance, it was 50-50 in terms of whether they did first come, first serve, or determine what was in the best interest of the community. So you have the statutory factors you can consider, and then past practice here or the policy. So, once we, and again, we anticipate having a license per conversation with the former owner, is that you will have that license in your possession and determine how applications are accepted. Because we're at a maximum amount for these, this license, you know, there are several people interested, because they don't come up, and they won't be available after you award this. Full alcohol licenses are awarded based on population. We have a population just under 19,000, so we have 18 full liquor licenses for all alcoholic for restaurants. We don't, we still have three of those left. But in this particular case, you only have one of the ones we have available. So I wanted to put on the board's agenda, because Lorraine's gotten a number of inquiries. We have not responded to any of those, because we do not officially have the license in our possession. Once we do, which I anticipate to be imminent, then we want to be able to know, board's pleasure.
Great. Thank you. So, so no action will be taken tonight, I don't think. Do we do it once the liquor license becomes available, right? Comes back to us, or do you, what do you want, are you thinking we will vote the policy tonight?
That's, that's up to you.
But that's the, the thought, to review them.
Right. If you want to defer it until then, that's fine. And Lorraine's just keeping the folks abreast, as they call daily. Because technically, we, we put it on the agenda because we were informed we would have it, but we don't. So I don't know if you want to table it, discuss it a little, or whatever.
Well, we discussed a little bit. And Sean, you get it from August, I can't, I can't remember any time that there was a liquor license that became available, and people were in line to get, you know, it was kind of...
Trish, you hit the nail right on the head. First come, first served, we did not have any type of a policy.
No, but I don't, can you remember a time when two people wanted it, and you said, no, you got to go in first?
Well, it just happened. It just happened. Whether I knew someone was second, you know, and came up short, I didn't realize it was a, there probably was a race too. I learned a little bit, talking to Trish just a month or so ago, I kind of look at this like, well, it's, it's a, an asset for a person that has one, and I guess, you know, just a few years ago, you could look in the Sunday Globe and see full liquor license look, well, you're in the business, and you can see these are selling in the business opportunities. I didn't, I've never seen that here in this town, but I suppose that's every person's right to do that. If this person holds one in current, and everything, they're good standing, they could sell it, and then a transfer would take place in this office. As I was always told, we couldn't really stop a transfer unless the person getting it had some type of criminal background or something like that. Or the person selling it owed taxes or something like that. So, I was, you know, it could really be stopped. Having said that, I think we probably should, I'd like to have a discussion about it, but not necessarily vote something tonight. I'd like to think about it for a couple of weeks, and, you know, see.
Well, this is a full liquor license that we've been talking about at this point.
Full, no, right? Not, not to be consumed by...
Retail, not a restaurant.
Right, full liquor, beer.
Is there a difference between?
Yes.
So this is, a restaurant could not get this...
No, there's, there's several different categories. There's cordial licenses, there's beer and wine, there's retail, there's restaurant.
I just, when I first came on the board, we had BYOB, and then we stopped, or the state, you can, you know more about it than I do, or maybe Lorraine does. What a way. Could, could someone still apply for one of those?
Don't hold me to this, but I believe so, yes. If there's no license available...
We just don't have one.
For restaurants, we still have one available.
The restaurants are available, there are three. And I think, what I'm curious is, you know, kind of spreading out, I mean, when you have an all alcohol, which is the beer, wine, and alcohol, presently, four of, three of the four in the harbor, right?
Yep.
So, one's in Green Bush, you know, the question comes to mind that, is there a possibility that maybe one could be used up in the Situate, kind of spread it around? I wouldn't necessarily be wedded to saying it's a mandate that you have to have in different villages. I think you have to take each case as they come, but certainly, I think it would maybe behoove having something in another business district, of that nature. So I mean, I think we take a look at each case as they come, evaluate it, the difficulty. The one question I had, which when you were talking, Trish, is, can we condition it that they use it, that they are actually making sales, that they're not hoarding it? Because there is a value, there's, you don't own a liquor license, but obviously, it gives you some kind of like leverage when you're trying to sell your business. So they can't sell the license, because it's not for them to sell. But clearly, when you have a business and you have a license, that's the goodwill that goes with it, so it gives it more of a, you know, more of a equity.
So, so part of the application is...
It's conditioned on...
They have to show where it's going to be stored, how the layout of the store is all that, so it can't be...
Usually, you don't sell it, per se, you say it's on condition that we have the transfer of the liquor license. That's what they're all based on. Because if the board says no, then the deal falls through. But the problem is, it's hard for this board to say no, when somebody says, I want to transfer the liquor license for a restaurant, or transfer the liquor license for retail, because what's your basis for denying? Unless they were like, selling to minors, underage, or whether they have some criminal background, or, you know, they've had some other issues. But that's really hard for this board to say no, when they're coming before to transfer.
I just was going to say, just one other thing quickly, it wasn't that long ago that it was the fourth one, where Duncan Donnitt says no used to be terms.
Really?
I don't know even that old. Maybe not.
I remember.
I remember.
Is this the one that's coming in one of these, just I'm reading this chart, it's one of these four?
One of these four, yes, right?
Four, four allowed, four in use, and that's one of the ones that's going to develop up.
So it's a unique situation that is coming back into us, and it's not being sold. So I think, yeah, I think, to be fair, you know, with all the economic development that we're looking at, the three villages, to publicize, once it comes in hand, that you know that we have it, that it is available for application. And that way, we're being fair about putting the notice out there for folks, because there may be folks out there that aren't currently in the business, that would like to get into it, that have a good business model that Warren's taking a look at.
So, it sounds like the board wants to adopt a policy that says, look, we'll review it, make it known that people can put an application in, and then we'll look at all these different parameters and see what the best use of the license is. I guess the question is, do we want to vote that tonight, or do we want to wait two weeks and vote?
Let's wait and see, until we get it in hand, right?
Another question. Trish or Lorraine, if I hold a beer and wine license, retail, and I apply to this board, and they think it's a great idea, so do I surrender my beer and wine and get this...
One of the examples I gave you here is under current situation, is that example.
Okay.
Yes.
So somebody could upgrade, but they'd have to...
Well, they'd be applying for a new full liquor license.
And they hand in the old, or...
They have to surrender their old one.
Okay.
Right, so let's move on, and we, it sounds like we agree in what we want to do, and we'll just...
Can I ask one more question?
Yes.
I'm sorry. I, I know you want to, can they, can that person that wants to surrender that beer and wine negotiate on their own, who they want to give their existing beer and wine to?
No, we can't.
Okay, that's it.
I mean, I would have to investigate that. I mean, I would assume that that would be one of the conditions that you would grant a liquor, a full liquor license.
But they could sell the current establishment.
Right, that's what I'm... You can't hold two liquor licenses. They have to surrender the current one before the board can issue the second.
The second one.
And it's the board's purview to, to evaluate and see it, yeah. You can't sell them. That's like me saying, I'm going to sell you my driver's license. You can't.
Well, I think one person can't hold two. There's only, an individual can only hold one liquor license.
Yeah, okay. I was just curious if there was any...
It doesn't have anything to do with alcohol, drivers.
An individual can hold more than one liquor license if they have more than one.
One establishment, right.
It's by property. So, you could have Marty O'Toole's restaurant empire, and he could have four...
Tesoro has two. Tesoro and Moro, different owners, different... But probably the same principles. They have two different restaurants.
Same company, same logo.
So, we don't want to vote the policy, then we'll do it all later. Okay. Move on to the next one. We are on discussion vote of a special town meeting.
We did this.
Stop up the date of the warrant. We individually polled everybody, and it looks like the date is going to be November 2nd. I think that worked for all parties involved. So...
Do you want a motion?
Yeah.
Move the Board of Selectmen's schedule, special town meeting, for the 2nd of November 2015 at 7:00 PM.
Second. Second by Mr. Harris. And that's Tuesday night?
Monday, Monday night.
Monday night. Monday night, November 2nd. Any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It is unanimous. So, just so we can go over the schedule, so that today is September 8th. Our next meeting will be September 22nd.
Yep.
Our next meeting will be October 6th. Now, our next meeting will be September 20th. I mean, October 20th, and then we'll have the meeting. So, we'll have to do the articles in the next...
Two meetings.
Two or three meetings.
So, the deadline, and I gave this to Ruth earlier, for receipt of all articles, including those by petition, is Friday at 10:00 AM on September 18th.
September 18th, okay.
September 18th is the...
September 18th is the deadline for receipt of all warrant articles.
All right.
And then we'll start discussing them on the 22nd, 6th, and finalize them.
So, you have a motion to open the warrant, and then you will close it on the 22nd. But we need them on the 18th for your packet.
Okay.
So, can I have a motion to open the warrant?
So moved. At... I'll tell you what time. I'll move to open up the warrant at 8:34 PM on September 8th, 2015.
All right. Second by Mr. Harris. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It is unanimous. And again, it closes September 18th. Moving on to discussion vote, one-day beer and wine licenses. This is kind of a formality of us getting them over to the Maritime Center.
Silent chef.
Move to grant Ellen McKenzie a one-day beer and wine license for an event to be held at the Situate Maritime Center on September 12, 2015, from 6:00 PM till 10:30 PM.
Second. Second by Mr. O'Toole. Further discussion? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'll move to grant Silent Chef a one-day beer and wine license for an event to be held at the Situate Maritime Center on September 24, 2015, from 6:30 PM till 10:00 PM.
Second by Mr. O'Toole. Further discussion? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It's unanimous.
Finally, I move to grant Silent Chef a one-day beer and wine license for an event to be held at the Situate Maritime Center on October 10, 2015, from 4:00 PM until 8:00 PM.
Second. Second by Mr. O'Toole. Further discussion? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It is unanimous. Great. Thanks for doing all of this, John.
We already did the next one.
We already did the appointments for the Beach Commission. And there are still, if you're interested in watching, there's still anywhere from one to three spots left. So, now we'll go to other business. Correspondence?
There are a couple of different items here. Do you want me to read them, or...
Or you can summarize.
Oh, so the first one is from... I don't know if we want to talk about this and determine who can attend, but from Anne Marie Galvin with regards to on Monday, September 28th, there'll be an all-day offsite to welcome Greg Grass from Washington, DC, who is the project officer for the Substance Abuse and Mental Health Service Administration. And he oversees programming for all 30-plus drug-free community grantees in Massachusetts, of which, you know, Situate is one of them, through the Situate Facts Coalition. So, there'll be an all-day workshop there, so we can talk among ourselves to figure out who can attend.
Monday.
It's Monday, the 28th.
You know what we hope for? As these events start coming on, if you can kind of send us an email so that we can kind of look at them and just say, "Here are the five things. Somebody's got to go into these," and we can have more in our schedules.
Okay. The only thing I never noticed is that I did send that one.
To John.
We have the cultural council visit next week that John and Marty are going to.
I was thinking more like when there's four, because no one's going to reply to that. But yes, that's great. So, are you going to this one?
I can do this. I can do this one.
I'm going to try to go to it. All right.
I need R. S. W. case.
Okay.
It's in Stotman.
We can take turns. We sit around the day, isn't it?
Yeah, okay. That sounds good.
All day works with the Maritime Center.
Yeah.
Great.
Maritime.
So, you could put me down as well, Lorraine.
And you're going to do the...
I'm going to read the next one. Yes. Oh, sorry. Thought you were talking to me. Another piece of correspondence we have is to Ms. Joanne Evans on Dataless Circle in Situate. To Joanne Evans and your family, "On behalf of the Situate Recreation and the Situate Recreation Commission, I would like to thank you for donating your ping-pong table to the department for the Situate community. Your thoughtfulness and generosity is greatly appreciated, and we thank you very much for your donation. Thank you, Maura Glancy and Jennifer Vitelli, our co-directors from Situate Recreation, for writing that letter. And as the board, we thank you as well for donating to our recreation department." And that's it for correspondence.
Want to approve the minutes? Motion move the minutes of September 8th between August 18th, 2015? Second. Go move. Just say so. So, move. Second by Mr. Harris. All in favor?
Aye.
Abstain.
It is unanimous, 4-0 with one abstention. Mr. Danny? And now, we will just go to other businesses. Does anybody else have any other business? Marty, anything?
Well, I just want to say, I'm sure everybody was around at the beaches this weekend, but I have to say DPW did an amazing job keeping up the track. I mean, there were tons of people there. They did a really good job. That was fine. The other thing, this is just... We are the most Irish town in America, and there's an Irish festival that's coming weekend, September 12th or 13th, on in Situate, that's at the Marshfield Fair. They have a big fair, group of musicians there. They're pretty wonderful. That's all. That's Saturday night, 12th of December.
You know, I was just going to say, I probably should have said it when Jennifer was here, but I was at Humrock yesterday, and I saw the lifeguards take it down for the final die. I was depressed. That's all I could think of. In about three more months, four more months, there's going to be snow, and the salt and everything else. But I have to say, I've been to the various beaches. Great job by the rec department, DPW picking up. We live in such a great town. Beaches were phenomenal. Yesterday was such a great day. The weekend was so fun. You know, there was a parade of the Horribles down in Humrock. I didn't go to that, but I did go to the one that was in Sand Hills. Just what a fun town. Just so cool when you find out that there are all these things that go on, and it makes our town special. And I defy anybody to go to the South Shore and all these other towns that have all the things that this town has to offer. Just can't beat it. And so, yeah, I was a little teary-eyed and thinking about my kids going off to high school and junior high for the first time and thinking about it. But what a cool place. Just, I love it. And, you know, I know this sounds crazy, but I have to tell you...
It's a Kleenex.
Even the signs. You know, I look at the signs that, you know, the DPW is putting up. You know, they put the logo town on it. I mean, just some subtle little thing. Some people probably hate it. I like it. I just think it looks nice. You know, the signs are new. They're not the crappy little old signs that you could barely read the names on. But, you know, I mean, it just... Those are the subtle things that kind of finely tune and focus your town and make it a little better place to live. So, I just wanted to say that to Kevin and DPW and everybody, you know. Great idea. Came up with it. You know, so when people go to Humrock, they realize they're actually in Situate, which is a section of Hum... Which is a section of Situate. It's not Marshfield. You know, I really thought it was great.
Just the news cruise.
Just the news cruise.
Although I'm teasing you, I agree with you 100%. We live in the best town in the country, and I think all the residents feel that. Maura?
I just want to say, school's out. And if... I mean, it's in. It's in. School's in. Kids are out on the road.
Your kids are out.
I know. My kids are out. You know, there's a lot of traffic and a lot of kids on the side of the road. And if you can all slow down a little bit as you're going through some of these backcountry roads that have kids standing at their driveways where there aren't sidewalks and there aren't major bus stops, just to keep an extra alert eye out as you're driving through town. Lots of kids out there. That's my public safety announcement for the day.
I was going to say, God knows, we've put a lot of obstacles in the roads to try to slow traffic.
We do. And so, yeah, absolutely.
But there's new bus drivers.
Yeah.
There's bus routes. Be patient. Nobody knows what the schedule is yet.
Special around the schools.
Yeah.
Sean, any?
I was going to say, but John stole my thunder, son.
I have to get the hook for you, too.
That was it. No?
No. And I... You guys repeated what I wanted to say. You know, the library wanted to thank them for doing such a great job in getting that all pulled off. And thank you guys for going to a great picture in the paper.
Nice event.
And looking forward to that coming around.
Nice challenge.
Everyone that works on the public safety project that's going on, you know, thank them for their work. Again, those kids that are going back to school. I guess the quick sports report would be that all our high school teams are out playing. So, Friday night in Cohasset, Situate plays Cohasset. Soccer starts, and the golf team started today. It's summer 39. And, you know, so on the fields, there's stuff going on right off the bat. So, go out and support them. Anything else?
And Brady's free.
What's that?
And Brady is free.
Brady is free.
All right. That one really. Motion...
So moved.
Second. Second by Mr. Harris. All in favor?
Aye.
Good night, everyone.